Okay, here we are.
I'll call the meeting in order six thirteen P M. Official and David can take over.
David Bell.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, and you haven't done introductions.
We haven't done anything.
Okay. Let's go around the room and start right there.
Dave Gallup.
So my cat's looking.
Did borrow acting secretary select board.
Pretty much.
Eric Keeman resident.
And off to video land.
Deb.
Up tank way town clerk town bookkeeper.
Well, thank you very much. It changes our additions to the agenda.
Really? Five, seven, seven.
I have some stuff. We fall under, under the warrants part. I just have to suffer signatures. Yeah, so I think we're good. It's doesn't need discussion or discussed it. So I will make just note that we, we have no changes or additions to the agenda. Allowing for public comment. Do we have any public comment? None heard. Item number four, meeting house work, painting bids. Let's start there. I have a sealed bid. I'll land seal. One or just one? This is a patient on the basis of the selection. Seal.
So I got a question. Sealed bits, can these be opened by you say you prior so we can get them before meeting?
It depends on what the, what we advertise. I did not advertise for still bits, so. I would say, yeah, I could have. Scott actually brought that in Scott Ryer.
Yeah.
And I guess he's not on the session.
No.
And this was somebody either he knows or knows of. Just I haven't read like any of it, so.
I was just, I'll take one, so.
That's all, that's all part of the same.
I think it's, it looks complex enough that we might want to consider table. Since we don't have any other bits.
I'm gonna say probably since just three pages worth of.
And let me scan it and get it out to you. People said Scott's not here. He seemed familiar with it, maybe from talking with the guy.
Probably.
I think. Guy from appears and recommended this guy.
Scott did tell me that this is a guy that has extensive experience with eating turks, turks buildings. Building of similar nature. And I caught him, I took him into something about doing windows as well.
Yeah, I just caught that too.
So that there might be a lot of goodness there.
And protecting the ground. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that evergreen was actually there today. It should go to some.
Oh, should it? Just to explain to the audience, we're sampling their lead over at the meeting house. We had the interior, exterior done with a scanner and they came back today to do the soil as well.
Did they find something?
Oh.
Gotcha.
Oh, yeah, you weren't here last meeting.
No. It blows with the.
They're destined to.
And you wonder how it survived all these years?
It has made sense. It's a bunker.
There's no, there's no mold grown in that thing. That's what it was for. Fair enough. The preservative. So does that change?
With the water that comes.
That needs to get done there or you're not even gonna have to.
So that's why they, so when we put the bid out, there was two bids to bid on was one with lead, one without lead. And then, did you end up redoing that?
No, I, I did rewrite it, but I didn't.
Then.
Yeah. It's what you're promising.
Do we have to vote to table?
As a.
Just agree on just. I say the table that happened, scan it out to us and we can digest it a little more.
Not supposed to digest the lead.
That's the new paint, so taste.
Kind of led me sweet taste. I don't, I don't know that.
If I can just throw two on the window first.
Either way.
It does have an attractive security term in terms of flavor. So, okay.
Scott was the one that wanted to sign here, isn't it?
He was, well, he brought the biddy in.
Oh, no, I was making, sorry, I was moving on to the next one before you were done.
Oh, well, we didn't.
Oh.
Need to talk about that at all.
I don't think.
What else, is there anything?
They haven't been there and I think he said he's coming back the next week or two.
Does he know?
Cause the fireside is not complete.
Yeah, right. Hasn't done this off it over in the front.
Right.
He's way behind.
And then there's the lead issue.
So did he pause because of the lead thing or was that just a schedule?
I'm not sure. Just disappeared.
Is there contact with them? Was there contact with them that we?
I talked to him this, I texted him this weekend, so it's, he said probably this, late this week or next week he'll be back. So everybody should be there right about the same time, working around each other.
I was asking.
Jan did send that thing to you and I about the third ceiling.
I seen those pictures before a picture like that before, maybe it is original report.
Yeah. Think he mentioned for extra three hundred, we could get back.
Did we do the original ceiling? Is that? Okay. Well, yeah, I know. So is the ceiling?
I think it was actually like a, it almost was domed in it, but.
It was domed. I've seen a picture of it, I think Steve Taylor has a postcard with a picture of the interior. The meeting house as, when it was a church was. Originally built with a domed interior. And it's redone sometime in the eighteen hundreds into what's sort of present look.
Is it not domed anymore?
It is not, but the remnants of it are there. And so the work we've been having done up on the rafters, these are the add action pictures. Has a lot of history. Doesn't have much recent history, but. Okay, so moving on then to item. Five, that was on there because of Scott. Do you want a table?
Kind of do, did you guys have something you want to say?
Thoughts like, to be honest, we have not had any discussions about what we are doing.
We live at one thirty six, which is.
Right next door.
Yeah. And we have three small kids and I'm just worried about like asbestos and it's getting torn down. And a fence that's gonna be a parking lot and be torn down, like something to protect our property, meaning our kids. From being able to get to any kind of debris or vehicles pulling in and out or equipment.
So unofficially, I have spoken to Jeremy Lamb. Labby.
Jeremy Lab? Yeah.
Just asked him the proper steps to go through and he's just basically get your asbestos testing done. Get what you want out of there, especially like the copper or anything else and then you can begin to tear it down.
We would definitely follow the rules as that's where we were going.
So we'll be working closely with the cell was on it. Because we get all the removals free through our tip, our contract.
Right. Is there been any kind of top of the fence? Cause I.
We really haven't.
Gonna be a parking lot for this building.
We, we've thrown around different ideas. We just haven't made a decision on that.
I would support one, honestly, if that was.
We've been, well, we've been there for four years, weren't really kind of leaving and you've got a parking lot that close to where kids are. Kind of.
There's nothing there now, right? Between the two, between the properties.
No, no, just grass.
So officially, we haven't really shared ideas. We've kind of tossed them out. Guess my thought was we could do something like we have here, corner off with a rock wall, so I wonder what we have here. But that's just my own personal idea. And Scott's got a great eye for aesthetics. He does too, so I wish he'd be here to input.
You could do, or consider doing some sort of grass. Paper block, I don't know if you've seen those. You see them occasionally, put them in and they're filled with a topsoil or something in the.
Yeah.
The middle and then you just grow grass. Of course, you have to mow it. But it lessens pretty dramatically the impact of a parking lot. It's got the pavement, it's now cobblestone semi-grass. Take a place right. Keep an eye out.
My biggest concern is just keeping the vehicles like falling out separate from.
Yeah, I don't think we're, we're not gonna endanger anybody. We'll make sure.
I, I wouldn't think that you would, but.
Yeah.
We've had shootings right here at our pull off.
We're not gonna make a drive through.
Things are getting scary and to think about what if strangers decide, oh, this parking lot is gonna be more convenient for their. Our. Yeah, than the pull off, because there's a lot of that going on over there.
Yep.
And even this, the apartment building across the road from my house is getting sketchy. Screaming and the police being called constantly and stuff, so. And it's just worrisome, like maybe a fence just makes you feel that much. That nobody's gonna run from somebody and come, we literally had somebody run into our house last year that drove down that hill and it crossed into the swamp. They flew into our kitchen, so we're like covered in, like just ran into our house.
That's where you went.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I ran out, though, with the police were looking for him. I ran out, I was like, he's in my house. Just get him out. So it's just the, the type of people and stuff. I just wanna feel secure and make sure my kids still are secure. That's our biggest thing.
Oh, I'm sure we'll do something right.
Yep.
You look good.
Okay. Yeah.
Table number six too.
Well, I left it on there, I didn't even ask Deb about it, but. Last time we, we talked about just continuing to work it in a future meeting, so I don't know if there's really anything we need to talk about.
Would it be possible temporarily? It's on the wrong side of the road, you want to drive up. That's why.
Yeah, that's the problem.
You went down all over the wrong side. Did you ever drove in mud season? Everybody knows about the last.
I know. Well, I, I would do it right there, just turn around. Wrong way. Yeah.
Or so he's riding his electric motorcycle.
He's like, what are you talking about? It was a motorcycle with my gal to. Although he wanted to be electric, so.
Sort of electric. I was, well, I guess he stepped out.
Yep.
He's out of my field today and they have free charging for. Your E Vs and plug in. Turns out it's free charging for state employees. But the work point, just sidelining here, well, it's, uh. When the legislature's not in session, apparently nobody parks in those parking lots.
So how do they know if a state employees then?
Yeah, I don't know. Who cares? Whatever. I think I'm dressed like a state employee, right?
Yeah.
If you're glad your country got a certain badge. You don't have a badge for that?
We have a badge.
Dad, get on that town administrator badge, badge.
So then is there any, do we need to talk about anything related to the box this time or should we?
I think we're still just in a matter of. I still say temporarily, put it right by the sidewalk and they can come the wrong way down the road.
It's not like there's a lot of traffic.
I know. Cause even if we were doing something over there, it's not gonna get done. Right away.
Scott had mentioned we could, but it kind of created somebody back.
I'd rather see it at the corner of the sidewalk right here.
Do, so do you guys wanna, if you wanna try this for now, we could.
Well, it's gonna be more permanent. We have a primary coming when, then August. Do we have a date?
Which is that it has to be out at least thirty days prior to if we don't put it out there now to be used for both town and election functions.
So we need to be out by, when, when's the August firmer?
Oh, where's my calendar? It is gonna be the ninth.
So we need to be out by July ninth?
Yep.
There's something said after.
Well, if we don't come to a decision in a meeting, we can just stick it out there for now.
Yep.
Bolted to the old. Pavilion that's here for the old sidewalk or something.
Okay, so I'll put that one down as tables. With comments, table with comments. Okay, number seven, audit twenty twenty one update. My update is the auditor is coming Wednesday to sit down as person here at the community center and work on finishing twenty twenty one. And if we don't finish it on Wednesday, he's coming back on Thursday. That's it. We're gonna have fun with auditing on Wednesday and hopefully not on Thursday, but. We shall see. So if you show up, you come in on, on Wednesday, you can. Talk with the auditor.
Learn.
And normally that it's split between the town administrator and the treasurer with the vans of that.
Kind of holding both those hats or hands, you're doing well.
With an all day or, I'm gonna pull it all day or with that one. Okay, so that's, unless there's any questions on the line.
Were we? What did we decide on if we were putting that or putting that out the bit or?
We were gonna ask him. I'm gonna ask him if he will continue for a year, but also put it out to bid.
For the following.
If the minimum for the following. And if he says no. For twenty two.
Yeah.
We're a little bit late on twenty two. We can do it. So onto item eight. Web posting of assessor cards, so. Show demo here. Is this the Patriot? Yep. This is to. Make. Permits. This type of access to the property cars, parcel cars, lister cars, probably what we used to call them, but now they're the assessor cards. Property assessment data for the town of Coventry. And what I'm showing you is what's available right now on our own website, but it's from twenty twenty one, it's preliminary grandness reassessment data. So it's prior to the grievance period last year. This went up, it hasn't changed. To my knowledge. But you can look up. Things by all different types. We were to look up. The landfill. You can see that it really hasn't changed, cause back. When this was posted, it was up there at about twelve and a half million. And that's not what it ended up at. So I thought, yeah, I don't, I don't mean, I probably shouldn't have used that as an example. This is the kind of thing you could.
Use mine where you stole eight acres.
Doing the acres. But yeah, you know, if you're curious, you can just see what the gallups are up to or anybody really, if you, you have. This is exactly the same as what Derby has up for, for their town and a bunch of other towns. It's the basic level of posting parcel data on the internet. And so we have it in the budget to support this.
So like to update it to real time?
Correct. Bring it into twenty twenty two.
I just thought they were doing these updates. Oh wait, that was. Cause they were doing updates to somewhere.
Well, they updated their own system.
After the.
They're, they keep it, they're gonna listen, it's actually to keep them on Patriot, but it's not, it's not, not published.
Okay.
This is actually. Not Patriot C A I. We're gonna do our.
Yeah.
Tax maps, web pro.
David, where the data flows coming from? Is it just stored on our servers or somewhere?
It's cloud. All memory, but it's, it's published off of Patriot.
Okay.
It's not. So the assessors.
I guess. What we're gonna get, is this something we have to update on a yearly basis? Or would it be something that, you know, you updated in one system and the update automatically takes on the website because of data back and has been updated?
Doesn't do it that way. They do two updates per year on this contract. Okay.
I talked to Matt about that one day and I thought it was, they were doing that as part of the new assessment that they were gonna. Put up the new stuff. But maybe I misunderstood, but then yes, there is a really be in a quarterly update is what they do based off of like random list and number. It's, they put them one of the two. God, it's all the same thing.
This dog numbers is definitely not the.
No, so Patriots is a separate company.
I know it can hear unless. Those of us, yes, they're supposed to be.
That, that's what I was, that's what I was meaning.
Patriot takes our grandest data aggregates, aggregates and puts it up online and we just link to there and to do it.
The assessors have, that have the, yes.
Yes, it's not exactly like that, but that's a good description. Okay.
So the assessor, the assessor clerk or the assessors just can't go in there and make the.
No, it's, it's a quote, it's not, yeah. So they have to send them a file.
From a security standpoint, you would never want those two electronically linked.
Okay, so I don't know that stuff.
Hackers could hack away, reduce their property values.
So you have your five hundred dollars, which includes the two updates a year.
Yes. So this is the annual fee that.
Plus an additional five hundred to.
So what is the, down below, where it says additional updates will be one fifty?
If we, if we had more updates to do other than those two per year. Which in theory, after talking with Matt, on a non, a non-assessment year, two updates a year is.
Probably overkill.
And overkill, actually.
Okay. But so you're not, you're not coming in here every time there's a land transaction.
No, they aren't doing that as an automatic process.
Yeah, so we're gonna look at seven, eight thousand on a small acre.
And that's appropriate because the, the grandest is frozen on March thirty first. It was this year too, and they, that's the, the end of the. So when we fill up a grand list this year is based on what, how it looked on March thirty first in terms of who owned what. And what the values, most of what the values. Going forward.
So this isn't gonna get updated until we sign?
This won't get updated with the new stuff until we sign. I had thought, I had understood him that that was, that update after there was gonna be an update including what they're going to do with it.
I did too.
I might have misunderstood. He, when Bill talked about it, he was going to try to talk these guys. See, I, I into it, just give us one. That apparently didn't happen.
Yep.
Which is okay.
So it will, after this, there's an initial of five hundred, annual five hundred, so this first round will be a thousand and then it should be five hundred after.
Right.
Now, the question, the other question is, is an annual fee of five hundred will be added to your annual license and support fees? Do we have the annual license and support fee for this already? Cause this is a Patriot, this isn't a Krajewski invoice or.
We get it, we get invoice from Patriot or a software license.
Exactly. Already?
Is a state in me, yes.
Okay. And that's for the assessors to use.
For a hundred year.
That's for the assessors use internally?
Right, okay.
So their actual cost is fifteen hundred? For you.
Well, for, not just for the service, but for everything that we do. I have to look up the number, I don't, I don't, I don't know what it is. I don't have my books, unfortunately.
So would that be considered the tax mapping update? No? Or online tax information?
The way that this is presented in the proposal would lead me to believe that it's the Patriot associated with a Patriot license.
Yep. The tax mapping is the tax maps from C A I. And this is not C A I, this is Patriot. So I would probably go with the line item that's in the budget that is online tax information is seventeen fifty. In our budget. That was added in there because of this budget that was given to us from.
Yes, that's aspect of it. Seem to be specific to this capability.
Yeah.
So I think we're well covered.
Yeah.
So I'm still, I'm, I'm still a little lost here, so we still have two annual fees in front of, so probably because on the web pro hosted. There's initial, then annual, then you've got an annual fee of five hundred, the one Phil just pointed out.
That one will be, yeah, I think that's just a statement, the annual fee of five hundred will be added to your annual license support P T P. So is that five hundred?
So we're looking at a thousand.
That was five hundred a year after this first year. Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the Patriot proposal for the web pro hosted. Some taxes, it's.
I would call it.
Property search.
Property search or classic assess.
You can name it. Or an initial cost of a thousand dollars and five hundred following that.
You can just motion.
That works. On the favor? All right. Is this something we have to sign every year though? Or is this a, until we say sorry?
They did not put. A slot name.
I would say.
They were probably invoiced.
So do you have one to sign?
Kind of behind the scenes question I have to then is the timing of those two updates.
You kind of want it after the March thirty first. And then.
They want it when the grievance abstract gets published like it just has. And then I think you want it at the grievances you've done.
Yep.
So I gotta give it some thought. So they're actually kind of, it's pretty quick session.
So quarter Q two wouldn't work, right? We like Q three and Q one.
Q four.
It's a question for Bill as well.
Q three would get the before and then quarter one would get the after.
Four and one.
I don't know if you want it that close together though.
We have to be careful. Every time the calendar.
April. So April first.
Yep.
April and then you said late August.
Or November. You could all see when, when he thinks the grievance period is.
Think the important one is.
Closer figure grievance thing. But yeah, people, if people, our citizens are gonna look up their stuff. Round about the time they started the grievance notices or we published that, hey. You can grieve, where the grievance.
I'm still upset.
Anybody can grieve.
You stole eight acres, I am glad you didn't put the cement swimming pond in, I've got.
You have seen that, huh?
You shouldn't have said that.
But it was funny to look it up and see the initial year would have that big a mistake than the same like Casillas.
Well, the Casilla one is because it wasn't finalized, we didn't have a bag yet from. San Souci when. When that thing went hot. Over the viewing audience, you can also hit this button that I just did called printable record card. And that's what the, the people who are looking for lister cards, assessor cards, whatever you wanna call it, realtors and lawyers will do. This is what they want. My system we buy should not say official, it should say official. Question I'm gonna ask.
Like the juice, most recent sale date, one, one of nineteen hundred. It was built in eighty eight.
I have a lot stronger in here. Next one.
Okay, I think I put the minutes in front of you, so we're on item eight, nine. Okay, I think I put the minutes in front of you, so we're on item eight nine, I'm sorry, on nine minutes from the N A sixty select.
Good motion, but though, but yeah. I do remember that. I will be making that official this week. Regrettably, but.
Did anybody talk to Bones?
I did, yes.
What do you think? Everybody knows Bones. All right.
Questions? Should that should the me being abstaining be in there?
Didn't realize that you did. Yes, it should be.
Yes, I did. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, may sixteen minutes as correction noted for number four. Can you get those letters out? No. We're not drunk, but they are written, okay.
Make sure you breathe.
I figured you probably had some.
Found some time today to sit in my car while I was charging. You missed that that discussion while you were downstairs. He's a state employee. We did not have any other business. So moving on. Or do we have some blatant?
I thought you had.
Introduce this one this far, but. And David, I think you brought this in, it's the.
Yeah, so that was. You guys authorized me to sign for.
You signed, you signed it?
Yeah, and they give you the signing. You sure?
Yeah.
I know I get.
This was the same, this was the same cost, right? That we agreed on just with the different dates.
Plus the additional tonnage on fine.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if it's gonna be worth arguing about, but. Derby did their end and they.
Are they done now?
Yeah, but and it cut short like twenty feet of to the line, I believe, I believe I'm pretty accurate. Can you bring the tax map soon?
I think it's right at the turnaround, isn't it? Because the signs right there, that turnaround.
That's the limit, so I got on this side. There's always been a little sign down in bushes. I don't know if it's worth arguing, but Derby, just make them aware.
You know which one it is?
I don't. Something I can look up, I just want to make it.
It's gonna be hard to see on here anyways.
It's right to be. Stuff is pretty.
You're getting into technology.
Well, no, I'm just lazy. If you can bring up Ross. Uh, Rossi.
Yeah, it's right there. So the line goes just before his.
See Rossi, how close it is that helps isn't that the line?
Yeah. That black line's the town line.
Right there by number two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they they cut short twenty feet or so.
So they went before the turnaround?
No, the turnaround is actually in Derby and then there's a culvert right there that crosses the road. Uh, no, down pass.
Okay.
So last culvert actually be the first culvert on that road. That was my concerns.
So we have a twenty foot gap now if we take it all.
Over in a brush, that's why I put that speed sign right there. I can reach out to.
Yeah, I think so.
So you only sign this, David?
So that's interesting, the town line is not. Correct.
There the parcel.
Parcels are not. So that town line goes right across right on the upper side of that turn.
Go back to that a second, I was looking at it the wrong way.
Do you see it, you see the turnaround there? No, for up right there. Just blowing. That's that's.
See what I mean? So which which what is the town?
That purple.
Oh, the purple one is.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're all.
I'm pretty sure the town lines are fairly accurate, hopefully they are, the parcels are not, but I'm pretty sure the town.
Yeah.
It's like the parcels for Derby, I think are okay, it's.
Yeah.
It's not our doing, it's they just cut up you all the things that you didn't make right.
So I know you guys approved me to sign this at last meeting.
I mean, mostly suspect issues saving and then over the additional tonnage on pine hill and that stuff. Prior sign then on behalf of select board second to give count.
So that was the other one, there was an actual separate one and I got it right here.
Oh, there's a second one. Scott authorized David Gallup as a road permission to discuss the amendment of the twenty twenty one contract, the book industry seconded, both in favor.
Okay.
Yeah, it was discussed.
Yeah, so the first one was the.
This was the extra tonnage. But he's got that on here as well.
He does.
Which is interesting because he wrapped it here at seventy five a time here to.
That that was that was correct, we did approve the seventy five.
Right, but this one, this one, he's got that four fifty plus four fifty tons at the sixty six sixty five. I know. Yeah, but so how are we gonna get charged for it?
Well, we should probably clarify it.
Now, it does say plus four hundred and fifty tons. I could see where he would have put that in there is plus that other amendment.
I'll be able to clarify that.
Bobby would be a good idea.
Either way, because you go, you get your contract there for thirty three, right?
Yeah.
Did he sign that one? So in theory, that one should think that plus five four fifty should come out of there.
It would be nice if he in his notes, he referenced.
Or reference that, yeah.
He he kind of does in the unit price at sixty six point six.
I know, but it's 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 uh, no.
So the whole contract other than the other than that thirty three thousand and sixty six.
I think the easiest thing to make it just look great is the. Put in there instead of the or plus four hundred and fifty tons on the separate on separate contract. This would be just worded in there plus four hundred and fifty tons from contracts signed on four four. Because then and then making sure this number does not include this.
Yeah, but we.
Or we could write it so it doesn't.
Or we write sort of it doesn't include it and we get it to sixty six sixty five instead of the seventy five.
So this is already signed.
Yep.
So all we actually have to do is eliminate this.
Yeah.
Eliminate this.
Yeah.
But it would be nice in the notes if you if they would just say reference previous contracts signed on. We've got a copy yesterday.
So you got a copy of this?
This is the copy.
I have that, but we should have the original con contract as well.
Yeah.
It would, I would like, it would be useful if he would reference the original contract. You want a copy of that so we can.
He does. In this.
Well, the unit price is the same, yeah.
Yeah, but you know. We all vanish from the face of the earth once the news come on.
Hey, Wednesday is gonna be raining and I got nothing to do, come in here, we can talk all day.
With the honor. With the honor.
He'd be happy to see it.
Clarify. And I take that copy with me.
I'll get you a copy of the original contract. Cause my understanding is that's what. Addison is modifying.
Yeah.
The original contract.
Yeah. I think Norm's looking at it. I think Norm just looking at.
Five hundred five thousand, I'm concerned about that.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah.
Cause.
He could come back and say.
Language in here that says.
Okay.
Replace replacing this, yeah.
You get a hold of me Wednesday and are you not working around office?
You're gonna be here Wednesday, Thursday, I will be here on Wednesday at least.
Yeah, physically.
So you can have the original contract.
I'm gonna try and dig it up right now.
Okay.
So many final files.
Okay.
Such as they are.
I really like.
You would like to see that. Just wants to see the big contracts. Okay, so our resolution then currently is sort of a table.
Yep.
We have to copy the contract. Or five. Who comment on? Modified contract. That brings us to anticipating second session personnel discussions, town administrator position. That's not here.
We have to.
I have copies. It would be useful to have for me to have some feedback about the approach at this point. Not looking for a decision. I think Scott, but I would just say we don't want to do that. Make a decision about that, but in terms of how you might have me approach the interview process if any.
Be good.
Scott has, I sent him. Copies of that.
Because he wasn't gonna be.
He wasn't gonna be here.
Yeah, we do a click on just to look down a minute and. You wanna move the warrants up and then do that last?
I mean, it depends on what these guys.
Yeah, I said a quick question for you on the on the, are you gonna keep the position, the recs still open? Past these two, I guess candidates or? Are we moving forward with these interviews on these guys?
Best part is that we can get at tonight, I think.
Okay.
A little bit, at least.
Either way, I guess we'll find out next week.
That, yeah, I just wanna keep. Moving the door.
No, I'm with it.
A little bit, at least.
How did we post it, was it posted until Phil, it was posted until.
Well, it's open until.
Open until Phil, so.
The average papers are done, but it is still on or should still be on the B L C T website, it's still on the states.
Yeah, so. That probably answers that.
Yeah, I was sure these were like your, you know, the shortlist of candidates that you guys were planning on bringing in.
Yeah, at this moment in time.
So you wanna swap to do the warrants?
Yeah.
I got some other stuff for you to sign.
We can, we can do that.
The planning commission is the signature on the. And you guys talked about this last.
Does he know about this?
He does.
Okay.
You guys have already decided you were going to appoint me as the M P M.
Yeah.
I'm two meetings behind on this particular. The one that has three page questionnaire. And they want a resume.
And we get. Working you about what you're gonna want to.
This is definitely him writing about himself. We voted on this already, I just need to sign it, right?
And you're just recommending that they look at me.
They look at you and then you have to go through an interview process and everything.
Essentially. I mean, I understand why they do that because those grants could be millions of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
But thirty thousand dollars, not even twenty eight thousand, twenty.
But we we're still another business, I was gonna throw in some other business. While these, when he comes back.
But we're still while we're signing stuff. There's a contract finally.
The updated contract.
It's the Orleans Fire Department contract. He gets it back there going. Contract with fire Orleans for the right number of.
Halfway through the year. Oh, and then that's the next thing is to try to get this. So we can get it on the calendar year like we did with the city. We got the contract, the dates moved to the calendar year or the the fiscal year, sorry, again, to the fiscal year. This isn't. Nope, January one to December thirty. But we had done it with the city because we had missed. A year or something, so we it worked out that we can get it on the fiscal, this might be, we might have to do some. Discussion and whatever that gives us on the fiscal, like a six month contract and then a year. There's been no discussion on. Everybody wants to change it. Everybody wants to change it. Okay, so, find this. It's the sixteen thousand.
Scott's on there.
Oh, is it?
We'll get it next time.
We're gonna add some.
Did you have any more signatures?
Not immediately in front of me.
Okay.
I'm thinking that's it.
So, last week, I went down to BM, had a learning for a day thing, like more, and there might be some options for us to get some hazard mitigation funding for things, if there's projects we have that might necessarily, not necessarily have documented history, but has history.
This is.
So, margin of emergency management.
Yeah.
So, I would like, maybe get together sometime to go and figure out some places, I was saying, Hikers and Webster Road, if there's anything that might be thought of that we could do to improve it from.
Oh, there's a, there's a mitigation.
Mitigation funding. And they, they're, and the state has two new programs now that don't base off of federal. So, it's a lot easier to get, and then part of it was, and one of it was, uh, because I asked, and I said, well, we have a couple of places, but it hasn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily have documented history.
Actually, uh.
Well.
Through FEMA. All you.
We don't have any paperwork, FEMA doesn't, we can't go in this FEMA, or they don't.
We should have.
Couple of them, so we, I think, just go down, make a list, and then if we have a couple, we can try to find it, if not, then we can talk to them, get some.
In those spots, uh, so even two thousand one, my first year. I started doing that paperwork right off the bat. I don't know why we wouldn't have copies of it, or FEMA one.
And, like, we just have to find it.
And then the other thing too is, it wasn't too long into the process, I mean, it was all four, we had it back again after the fish concert. And I think that is about the timeframe, and they started doing the GPS stuff, so they should have all, you've got.
And maybe Jason has, would Jason have that?
He might, you've got that stuff, GPS.
Just for the nineteen. So, I just, I just have to see.
So, most of those will actually be the same spot, Webster's, you get the spot on River, I.
Yes, the other one that I think you should really use this to work, working on, is that ice jam study. And going forward with a planning study, and what they, since we're going to get this funded um, from that report, I know you weren't there with it, but.
I saw the report, wasn't overly impressed when I saw the sandbags.
Well, it was one of the options, there are many other options, and my options, we're gonna skip over the sandbags and go to the next thing. So, but that was, that's something I'm gonna try to work on. Pull that ice jam study back in and try to get, see what we can do with it, and then a couple of other ones.
Might not be a bad idea to have Pat Ross, William Ross, and that stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. Project plus.
So, not for you. I'll give you that blank look.
Yeah.
No, not more. Thank you, sir.
Just trying to use money that we can get.
Yeah.
I wish I would have known about this prior, because we might have been able to get him some help. The new, the new program might have been able to get real some money.
Oh, yeah. Follow that to, there's another one, the downtown designation might have helped too. Theoretically.
Well, probably could, that tax credit business with a bill designation in the front, frontage appearance.
Because that whole section right there could be part of buyouts.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that, that's.
And they.
I turned, uh, talked to, uh, currently, or line about.
Yeah, like those, those, even Miller's Place, those down there, potentially.
A little bit pricey for that, but, uh.
Well, I don't, it's, it was interesting how they do it, and they have it now, those two programs, so when, with, if you do a buyout through the FEMA funding, you have that seventy-five percent still, or the twenty-five percent still by of the matching share. The new, two new pro- programs they did, I believe if I understood it right, they're able to take that funding and put it towards that, so it's a hundred percent buyout.
Yeah, that was mine, so.
And it was.
These, these guys probably won't want to get bought out till they fix the first ice jam and jam.
Yeah.
Or we can show them the video.
Yeah.
I found it on.
Oh, did I?
But it's kind of hard, they're putting all that money into it now, and it's pretty cool.
From genie or John's of it. I was. It looks literally like rivers coming at their house, but it was.
Yeah. But even maybe, like, to look at the bridge and see if there's any more that can be done than what's been done. There, there was talk about, I feel like we might be able to get that island that's shown up there pulled out, too.
Boy, I don't think you will, talking to Pat, and I think too, uh, when you listen to those guys, that sounds like a great idea. And it's always the thought of everybody in town, let's get that island out of there. But then, when you think about the whole scope of that river, that's the last place you have a rattle, step through it. So, when you widen a river, you're slowing down even more. Unless you'd have more ice, the only thing.
But it's just not up there, so it doesn't move.
The only thing we do, like, even with the dredging, I guess, me and Pat's thought was, basically, a lot of it's, we're just making more room for ice at the end of the day, you know, because of the elevation, it's just so terrible.
So, we have, well, Sasha's boss was down there, and we can call him up anytime and say, hey, come take a look at this with us, and give us your two cents and see, because I don't know if, we looked at that, but I don't think, no, if we, because Sasha was here for that, when they came up and did the visit.
To look at reality.
No, and we can, did Sasha come up to me?
She did.
Yeah, but I think she also came up for the ice jam thing, too. So, just. So, just putting that in so you know that I'm thinking about it. That's all my other business.
Okay.
Do you want to do warrants?
Yeah, I'm going to take a second.
Do warrants. Are you sticking around for executive session anyways, or are you gonna?
No.
Uh, oh, yeah, that's me. I went through them, did you look?
So, was there?
I gave you all the questions I had. Oh, you wanted to know about what money is. Right?
Previous.
The previous one.
Oh, it doesn't matter, it's already been signed, but Deb was gonna look in the, did you send me that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I emailed that too before I left today.
That was high, because that was the, uh.
That was a reappraisal for Casella.
Oh, that wasn't, oh, that was the public record, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, what do we got, do we have a check tonight for San Suce?
So, was that, or were your other things in the year completely separate from this? Because there's San Suce billing, Orleans Fire Department contract, you want to sign.
Yeah, the update on San Suce, I had a fairly lengthy discussion with, uh, Brian Monahan. He was gonna call San Suce and try and sort it out as to why he was billing us the way he was billing. That didn't, it didn't make sense to Brian, so, yeah, but it doesn't, that makes sense to us.
We wrote that check and sent it already.
No.
No, 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 no. No.
What was in here, or something else, then?
Yeah, so, we were billed, we, San Suce sent us two bills for, um, dredging through his records to answer the, yeah, data call, they totaled
Thirteen?
A lot.
Almost fourteen, that's. It was a bill I saw, and there was, there was two, one was most of it.
There, I mixed up the check part with something else.
There, I would describe them as inexplicable.
So, I assume you told Brian the check you'd get from Casella's.
I did, because he sent it to us, actually. I also sent it to Brian.
Oh, okay, so that should be a good assessment of what we should be paying San Suce.
I'm glad you said that, because that's basically what I told him.
What was that?
That he wanted to know a number that we would be more comfortable with. Basically, what I told him was take a zero off his bill. Get it in the fourteen hundred dollar range.
You were talking about what Brian billed us for that same.
No. So, Casella's given us a check for what, twenty-three hundred dollars for that information?
Right, and you didn't know that. Right, they sent us a check through Brian to reimburse us for the, our costs in answering that data call as permitted by state law.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something that Brian and his guy Zach put together.
Yeah, and I was based on, because Zach was asking me for the time that I put on.
Right, and actually, most of it was for your time, so. Brian asked me the question, that, okay, we have this fourteen thousand dollar bill from San Suce, what what makes sense to me, right, so I can answer for myself, that basically take a zero off, fourteen hundred, yeah, that starts to make more sense when you're in here. You're looking through your own data that you generated. You provided, you were very careful to separate your secret sauce out of. And now you're, you're gonna spend some, some crazy number, fifty something hours.
Yeah.
His time, employee time. Looking through it again, so you can separate it out, what? And then charging us for four hundred colored copies that you never pulled.
They weren't delivered.
To the store, he, he posted the stuff up to a SharePoint site that Brian then set up. That's how they handle it. Print copies.
Yeah.
So, the whole thing is like, what the hell is this? Okay, Brian had more help.
I could see that.
She was gonna use apparel. But I hadn't had time to call him to get the rest of the story, hopefully, on that interface.
Okay. Yeah, I did the Orleans, you got the updated Orleans contract with the rate.
Okay.
Whatever in there, so, and I've gone through the warrants and asked the questions I need. I'll make a motion to accept them, so. All in favor?
So, also move myself out of the building. See y'all later.
Thank you. Between your hours, you did. You have the four thirty. So, was that for?
It's not quite your hours, but it's getting close.
Summertime, I haven't been, just ain't been into it, I've been getting up at freaking five, it's embarrassing, I've got no energy.
But even at four thirty, the sun was up.
See, we went to Columbia at three-thirty Sunday morning. And it was already lighting up outside, Columbia Forest, the fire, fire hall. I look in the sky, and Jesus, sun's already getting that close.
They call that a daylight sparkle.
Three-thirty, that daylight sparkle?
This is an actual word for it, I should, I should remember, I was, there's actually four different.
We're there for a couple of hours already, and it's getting light out, I'm like, no, must be seven o'clock.
Five-thirty. See what you missed in my sleep.
Usually, I'm getting more energy this time of year, just, boy, I've been feeling shitty. This weekend was terrible.
Bad.
Wife was sticking the swab up my nose.
So, assuming she's better, she's better now, so.
Yeah.
She lose any taste or smell or anything?
I don't think she did, you know, so, my boy actually unofficially had it, but he said he can't. No, it's dead.
He unofficially had it?
He said he went a couple of days, he couldn't taste or smell any.
Oh, Keith's, I'm curious, are we having more issues getting that in? Um.
That's a hot thing on that, I was on the conversation today about that. I was mistaken, he does have a little bit of cough, I, I mean, under two hours, so it's I think you go through, and he presented me with an email trail that I was on, acknowledging his content.
Oh, son of a.
Is it?
John.
John.
Yeah, so, um, let it on the straight and out, but I'll just, I can't fix it for this payroll that we're just paying, but.
So, what happened? So, let me put in for sick time.
So, he, he, no, that we did the same time, that was.
So, this time he had, um, some over. Three-quarter, he had thirty-nine and a quarter hours one week, so he put down three quarters of an hour comp time, and then he had a half of overtime for the other week, so he didn't think he had comp time, so he, the addition for a half hour worked out to the three-quarters comp time, so he just leveled it off. But you've now found that he did.
But he does have some, and so they'll get a half hour overtime later. Yeah, we'll work it out, yeah, he'll be compensated. Probably will be compensated the same.
Somehow.
Yeah, it'll all.
You do gotta work it out.
He keeps good records.
Yeah.
I wasn't keeping good records, I gotta go back through. Because I, I have a spreadsheet on, document that stuff. Um, when we produce the email, that's me.
It's time sheets, though, that seems to be harder getting.
I've just, I quit reminding, I, for a while she just sent it to them, you know.
Which it's for.
We're not paying it on our, on our money.
And she doesn't have any complication, is her sick time, so that, that's not a huge thing on at least seven. That's my thing on having time sheets, is being able to track the complication, sick, whatever.
Yeah, so there's.
But she does end up getting them to you. You know, it's just a.
Turn your minder. We don't have any real information.
No.
But you know, was she actually here?
This is John. Looking so much, John, it's time she.
He's doing ours, he's not doing what he does.
Yeah. I'm not sure, right?
Yep. I'm gonna make a motion to enter executive session.
To discuss.
To discuss personnel matters, and David Barlow can raise it up in a minute, so, pardon me.
So, you're gonna bring me in with you?
Yes, oh, to, to David Barlow.
Okay.
Should, yes.
Yep. Second. All right, Deb. Uh, do you want me to, uh, put you in the waiting room, or are you just gonna, are you checking out?
No, I'm checking out, Popo said it's time to check out.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna pause.
Yep. Okay, we have come out of executive session, and no decisions have been made on the personnel discussions, town administrator position. Anything else? Nothing, make motion to adjourn. I.